Do it. Good evening, welcome to October 2nd, 2024 School Committee Meeting. We'll start by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Sixth present.
Seven?
Seventh present.
Three Special Labor Business, 3.1. Spotlight on Excellence at Moody's School, DESI School of Recognition, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is really gratifying to see so many of our Moody's School friends here tonight, and it is a joy to be able to celebrate you. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Crocker to introduce this item. Ms. Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. It is also my pleasure to welcome the amazing, hardworking staff of the Moody's School here this evening to be recognized for their incredible improvement over the past year on the MCAS 2024 Accountability Measures. The Moody's School began last school year with an accountability rating at the sixth percentile. This required us to work together, come together as a team, to really understand what were the challenges the school was facing with accelerating outcomes for students. We've historically had a high population of multilingual learners, students new to the country, learning English, and as well as a unique structure in a little tiny two-strand school that also breeds a wonderfully close-knit learning environment and a place where families really have always trusted to send their children. Through some really hard reflection, a lot of planning, assessing, targeted intervention, aligning resources, and scaffolding, I'm pleased to say that the Moody's percentile ranking rose from the sixth percentile to the 22nd percentile in one year, and they have been named a School of Recognition by the Department of Education. So tonight, we celebrate the Moody's School. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Robbie Keefe to the podium, I think she's hiding out back there, to recognize this accomplishment.
Thank you very much. I have to put my glasses on. Good evening, Mayor Rourke, committee members, Superintendent Skinner, and cabinet members. My name is Robbie Keefe. I'm the principal of the Moody's School. I reside at 165 Butman Road. I want to thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to showcase the hard work of our students, staff, and families who achieved phenomenal growth on our NCAS scores, going from the sixth percentile to the 22nd. Please join me in congratulating the collective efforts of everyone who contributed to this astounding achievement. They persevered through the challenges with a growth mindset and believed that by working together and trying their best, they could improve their outcomes. We are very proud of everyone who contributed to this achievement and very, very grateful for the recognition. This was a collaborative effort, as I've mentioned, on the part of students, staff, and families. It's our turn to shine this year, and for that, we are so grateful. There are many people to thank at the school and district level who supported and encouraged our efforts that are too numerous to mention by name. They visited our school, offering resources, suggestions, and encouragement, and many schools opened their doors for classroom visits to observe and discuss how to best deliver the curriculum. As they say, it takes a village, and for that, we extend our deepest thanks to everyone. I would be remiss if I did not mention all of the wonderful work being done in the rest of our schools. They too deserve recognition for their hard work, dedication, and collaborative efforts. Lowell is a very special place, and the Lowell Public School System has always had a special place in my heart. I've always been proud of the Lowell Public Schools, first as a student, then a parent, as an educator, and now a grandparent. I look forward to continuing the work with such amazing people, and many thanks again for this recognition to our students, staff, and families. It's so well-deserved and welcomed. Well done, everyone.
Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're very, very proud of the Moody's School, and we have a good sense from years of the consistent hard work that the staff at the school does. They have a terrific atmosphere in the building, one of collaboration, and it's like a family in that school. And we are just very grateful that your hard work has been recognized, and you have the reward of that, and it's recognized by DESI as well as by us and by the school committee. As school committee members, can also feel free, if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you all on this amazing achievement, and I think it shows our students can do it, right? And I guess I would ask, is there a couple of things that you think helped you to make this kind of growth in one year? Like, what were maybe the top two or three things that had the strongest impact? Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to echo those sentiments. I think it is an amazing accomplishment to see that kind of growth in one year. Really, there are numbers that really tell you something. We get a lot of numbers thrown at us, as you might imagine. That really tells you something, and I'm just incredibly impressed with the work you've done, and I congratulate you all on such a great achievement, not just for yourselves, but again, for the families and the students you work with. So, thank you all.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate each and every one of you, and to be quite frank with you, I'm not surprised. You have Principal Roberta Keefe, which I'm sure that she works at this tirelessly, and I know that we've had conversations many times, and she is extremely proud of that school, like we all are, but certainly the staff, because she knows the staff makes the difference, and the input from the parents, too. That has been, I think, paramount, and obviously, the strength of the kids, and I know that Principal Keefe would probably be working very hard to make sure that that took place. So again, congratulations to each and every one of you. Fantastic job. Great.
Mr. Bahu?
And I'd just like to say congratulations, again, to the whole team. I mean, it's quite the accomplishment when you go from a six percentile to a 22th percentile. That's growth that is really not expected from any school or any school district across the state, so it's really easy to understand why DESI wanted to recognize you and make sure that we knew about it. So that is quite the accomplishment. I've heard it once, and I've heard it again. It truly does take a village, so congratulations to all of you for being a part of it, because I'm sure it can't be done just by one or two or five people working. It's about everybody working together, so congratulations.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just want to congratulate to all of you, and thank you for your commitment. Thank you, Robbie.
Once again, congratulations, thank you very much, and the pressure's off for next year, right? So we'll see here, we'll get up to the 30s or 40s. So you're more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting, if you like. Principal Keefe sure wants to get out of here, so we'll let her lead the way. But once again, thank you very much, and have a good evening. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Bahu to take 10.2 out of order, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes, 10.2. The approval to accept the donation of the AED machine, and the motion to accept said donation by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. And before we get to a roll call, just like to welcome the Keenan family, once again, to City Hall. You are no strangers to not only City Hall, but to baseball fields, athletic fields across the city with your tireless work in donations of these machines in honor of Adam. So once again, we thank you very, very much for all that you do do, and somebody's like to come up and say a word. So anyone want to come up and be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Skinner, school committee, members of the cabinet. I just found out I was doing this about 30 seconds ago. I don't have any remarks prepared, and I don't represent the Keenan Foundation, but from having worked with Christine across two different schools, from when I was Principal of the Shaughnessy to now STEM Academy, she is a tireless advocate of her brother's legacy. And to just tell you a little bit of what I've learned about her brother, for those that don't know, her brother passed, and I believe 2011, from a cardiac event while playing baseball for UMass Lowell, and he was a graduate of the Shaughnessy Elementary School, and he had teachers that Christine later had the privilege of working with, and he attended the Sullivan Middle School and was a graduate of Lowell High School, and by all accounts, was a fantastic individual by all measures. So I'm very proud to work with Christine and many staff members who honor her brother's legacy, and I'm happy to support this wonderful organization, and I hope they continue to raise awareness for AEDs in public spaces. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Any comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Once again, Ms. Keenan, if you want to stick around for the whole meeting, you're more than welcome to, but it's good to see everybody again. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Yeah. I return to the agenda. We have the minutes on the motion to approve the special and regular meeting minutes by the Lowell School Committee of September 18th, 2024, and place them on file by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is passed. Five, permission to enter, 5.1. The motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six yeses, one absent.
5.2, ratification of collective bargaining agreement, LSAA, school year 24, 25. The motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay. Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Six memorials, 6.1. Philip A. Donahue, brother of Tara Donahue Gabriel, Maury School Social Worker. Madam Clerk, please hit the lights. May Philip rest in peace. Seven motions, 7.1. Mr. Conway requests a superintendent reach out to the appropriate organizations and unions to invite the LHS retirees to an open house of the new and renovated Lowell High School Facility, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as we have seen recently, we've got an incredible high school in the works, and it looks great, and I know that many of the individuals that I worked with for many years, retirees, said, geez, I'd love to go in and see the school and see what's going on with it, because, and then they start talking about the memories and the years that they spent there, and some of them have been there for 20, 30, 40 years. And I think that, I think it would be important, it would be very important that they would be respected enough that we invite them to a, you know, to go in and to view the new high school, and I know they're very excited about it. So again, these are the people that helped build this school, these are the ones that have taught and worked with and coached and so forth for so many years, and I think that they would really appreciate a special invite to view the new school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Eight, subcommittees, 8.1. School Improvement and Performance Management Subcommittee reported the meeting on Wednesday, September 11th. Mr. Bahu, chairperson, comments now.
Sure, we had a school committee improvement performance subcommittee meeting on September 11th. It was attended by school committee members Bahu, Dougherty, and Mr. Lay, as well as school department personnel, Mr. Skinner, Ms. Crocker Robards, the Assistant Superintendent, as well as Dr. Todd. We spoke about the Lowell Public Schools demographics. We spoke about student enrollment, as well as some school comparatives at the Robinson, Daly, Pine, STEM, Merkland, and Bailey, and we discussed the best option to have equitable enrollment across our school district, to have the best distribution of our students. We also spoke about busing and looking at the zones of our school districts. Right now, we're using a few zones, and we're trying to try to figure out what would be the best way for busing, transportation, and students to even attend some of their local schools. A question was posed by Ms. Dougherty that we could go ahead, have the zones be more equitable, as well as emphasizing the hope for local schools, or I should say, neighborhood schools, which has been a common talking point. Upon all of the discussion, we concluded that we would like to move this forward to the school committee as a whole, so that we could begin this conversation and look at the big picture to see how we can begin to improve and begin to identify what more needs are for our demographics. We also spoke about the food service menu. Aramark came and visited with us. The woman entered, shoot, well, the head of Aramark was there, and she shared with us, you know, the offerings that they have for school lunches, and how they do choose the best food options available to them, and the, you know, the difficulties of hiring, you know, the proper people to work within the cafeterias and such like that, as well as trying to put out breakfast and lunches, and as many as five lunches, five lunch options per day for the students. We took it all under advisement. She did share with us, and Mr. Lay did ask a question about if Ms. Spooner Gomez shared the state guidelines with the committee, so we're looking for that information back. And I asked a question about, you know, do we need five lunches per lunch to make sure that the cafeteria workers can actually keep up with the lunch as well as the breakfast? So we did have a meeting, and we discussed all of those things. We are looking forward to see the growth potential within Aramark and ourselves to always better our cafeteria options. So that was essentially the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments? The motion to accept the report, the report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Ms. Dougherty?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Bahu said about the complexity of the busing issue, to really come up with something that is fair, that no matter what neighborhood in Lowell you come from, you have similar options in terms of choices for schools that keeps a balance in terms of our diversity. And we've been trying to tackle this issue for a while, so the reason I wanted to speak is because I think that what we're asking tonight is not just a motion, a report of progress, but also this committee saying, we would like the administration to look into some options for us, that we can improve busing, and if we have savings, great, it's not the bottom line, most important thing, but do it within those parameters, that we keep the equal access, that we keep the diversity, that we keep the balance as much as we can. So it is a, it's an important one to tackle. It might be complicated, but we need to do it. So, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Nine reports to the superintendent, 9.1. 2024 MCAS Results and Accountability Report. Comments, questions? Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, I'm very happy to present this report to you. We consider it to be one of the more important set of results for us to consider and you to consider each year. Ms. Crocker has presented a report that's in your packet, and we'd like to entertain any questions you may have. If I may start by calling on Ms. Crocker to give a quick summary. Ms. Crocker, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Skinner. We have the now official unembargoed results of the 2024 MCAS, and obviously, we began our evening tonight celebrating the Moody's School, but we do have some other reasons to celebrate. So I will start with a quick picture of the overall performance of Lowell compared to the state. Last year, Lowell's criterion referenced percentile was at 40% in terms of our overall performance. The state was at 36. That's in terms of our growth. This year, the state was at 42, and Lowell was at the 51st percentile for growth. How the state, yes, that's correct. So how the state, so our Lowell performance in 2024 was the 51st percentile for growth. What the state does to calculate the formula is they take 40% of your performance in 2023 and 60% of your performance in 2024 to get the average criterion reference percentage, which is the 47. So our actual performance this past year was at the 51st percentile. So that is, you know, nine points above the state at this point, which was very exciting. We do have a few other highlights. One of our big focus areas last year was on student engagement, and we had a particular focus on our Hispanic Latino subgroup. I'll start off with some similar numbers. Last year, in 2023, the state criterion reference percentile for that subgroup was 28%, and Lowell was 27%. In 2024, the state percent rose from 28 to 33, but Lowell's rose from 27 to 54. We doubled the growth in one year of our Hispanic Latino subgroup, and so that combined average from 23 and 24 puts our criterion reference percentile at 43%, and the state at 31%. Overall, last year, we had five schools that were ranking in the bottom 10% and required assistance from the state. We have two schools exiting that status this year, the Bartlett and the Moody, and the STEM Academy has also risen from the 10th percentile to the 16th percentile, and we had remaining, we have six schools cited for low performance in the Asian subgroup, so their overall percentiles are healthy, but the Asian subgroup is not performing at the same rate as the Asian subgroup in the cohort of the entire state of Massachusetts. We also had two schools cited for low performance in the white subgroup, and two schools cited for low performance in the sped subgroup. And again, that's a discrepancy between how that particular school subgroup compared with the average of the state. So overall, we made 8% higher growth in the criterion reference targets compared to the state. When we start looking at the data just a little bit further into the subject areas, the state of Massachusetts had an eight tenths of a point decline in overall in the ELA performance, and so did Lowell. We mirrored the state exactly for the overall average performance on MCAS. You are aware that we are currently undergoing a literacy review. This is also mirroring national trends, the decline in literacy rates, and so Lowell is in the midst of a literacy review to examine our curriculum, our pedagogical practices, to put some things in place so that we can reverse that downward trend and start leading the pack in the state of Massachusetts. We have some good news to report on the math front. There was an overall increase of half a point in the state, and our district data in math grew 1.7 points. So we were three times the growth of the state in math this year. And we do attribute some new math curricula. We have high-quality instructional materials now, all the way in kindergarten through eighth grade, with our Eureka Squared, our Illustretive Math, and this year, we're implementing reveal math in Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry at the high school. For the high school, the state and the district ELA scores remained completely stagnant. No change up or down either way. Our district math at the high school level increased by 1.3 points, while the state went down 2 tenths of a point. We have some work to do in science, though. The state decreased 3 tenths of a point in science for students tested in grades five to eight. We dipped 5 tenths of a point, half a point. And then, science at the high school, the state increased by 6 tenths of a point, and we decreased by 3 tenths of a point. So a continued focus in ELA to reverse the downward literacy trend that we are experiencing in our district, in our state, and throughout the country is necessary. Continued progress in mathematics, and some strengthening of our science curriculum. We have implemented new science curriculum in grades six through nine with the OpenSciEd, and we're continuing to examine the remaining science curricula as well to try and support continued growth in science. But overall, in terms of growth, the Lowell Public Schools has a lot to be proud of with this year's MCAS performance, and I'll entertain any questions from the committee.
Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. This was so exciting to read this report, and I want to start by saying, the context of comparing ourselves to the state average, we've always done that, right? Because we are a gateway city, you know, we have higher poverty levels, we have more English language learners, when you take the whole state together as an average. So when we do better than the state, I really take that as an accomplishment. So this was very good news to hear. I do have a couple of follow-up questions. When we look at, I think you said there were three schools that moved in turnaround status, right, within a year or two. The only one I'm aware of was the Bartlett, but then the Moody was another one, right? Were those schools connected to the community model, the community schools model? How many of those were? Let's put it that way.
So all schools who were in the lower end were in the community schools model, right? So by virtue of their lower achievement scores?
They got the communities, that's what I thought. But I know that this particular budget we just came off of, we gave schools the choice. I mean, we had this whole discussion about that role, the community schools manager role. So the three schools that jumped quickly, like the Moody made this incredible jump, the Bartlett, was that a year or two years, that turnaround?
That was one year.
That was a one, I mean, when you think about the growth in what that takes, and that's why I was very interested in what Principal Keefe had to say about one of the key reasons, collaboration with families, collaborations with the wider school community. I mean, those are the lessons that we need to bring, because we still have 11 schools that are requiring intervention, right? There are 14 that the state said you'd made great progress, but there's still 11. So how many of the 11 have the community schools model that are in needs assistance or whatever they call that category?
I don't want to misspeak, but I believe there are six schools that retain their community schools manager. The other thing I want to point out, too, is that may get lost in all of this, is that the Stockloso Middle School went from the 12th percentile to the 23rd percentile, so they made 11 percentile points of growth in one year, which was exceptional, and the next highest. year, which was exceptional, and the next highest growing school outside of the Moody. And they were also part of our turnaround organization, our Priority Schools Network.
Okay. So of the eleven that are still requiring assistance, about six of them are not the community schools' model. I'm just looking at, it's the same way I feel about the chronic absenteeism, the improvement we've made, and I want to talk about that, too, before I get off. But I want to duplicate what's working. I want to say, we've seen great success with this model. How are we sharing that with other schools? That's just my point with that. And then if I could just jump to the attendance, because that's kind of another thing with me, and now I don't know where that sheet is, but when we looked at, you know, they had this point system that if you declined, if you didn't make, if you actually went down instead of improving, you get a zero. If you stayed the same, no change, you get a one. But four points when you exceeded your target. So then when I looked at your chronic absenteeism report, and just for the K to eight schools, you know, not the high school, every single one of those schools, every single one of those schools got four points. They exceeded their target. So we know we've had a problem with chronic absenteeism. It went through the roof during the pandemic, but we are seeing such progress. And again, what are we doing right? You know, what are we doing right that we need to make sure we continue? With the high school, it wasn't as consistent. And I don't know if you had some ideas around that, because you look at the lowest-performing students at the high school, they declined in attendance. Where the lowest-performing in the K to eight schools exceeded the target. So is there more work to be done around attendance at the high school? Obviously, there is. But what are the plans for that? What are you looking at? What are you seeing in terms of, like, this is working, we need to do more of that, or whatever? Just your thoughts on that. But this was, I was really happy to read this report. We're going in the right direction, and for those people, and I know there's a, you know, a question on the ballot, I'm just going to speak for myself, for those people who think we shouldn't have some baseline of standardized testing, this is an example of how the state has taken the whole MCAS as a punishment and looked at it as growth, because we want you to be able to, a high school diploma in Lowell or anywhere else in this state means something, right? And we want you to meet that. And we're looking and awarding, we got recognized by the state for our school, for the Moody School today, looking at those districts that are doing the work to make the progress. Because we're not the same as Wellesley. We never will be. Our parents don't have the money, our families don't have, you know, but we can be the best we can be, and we're doing that by showing the progress. I'll shut up, sorry. Any thoughts on where we go from here?
Thank you. We need till midnight to respond. Let me just say, if I can, that we do believe that it's worthy of, that the results are worthy of us finding the positive and celebrating. And then I think it's a really great idea, as you did, Ms. Doherty, in turn to the principal of the Moody School, and say, what do you attribute the success to? The same for us at the district level. It's worthy of a longer response, and it's worthy of specifics to tell you about which we can do, right? But that really would require a bigger, a longer forum, because it's complex and it's multifaceted. And so I appreciate your support for community schools, for example, but I'd be very, very slow to attribute the growth in schools to the community schools' model. It's not to say it didn't contribute, but we need to analyze that, and we need to, so we make what we call hypotheses. Let's say, Ms. Doherty's hypothesis is that that made all the difference. We should take a look at that. Right. But I think it's complex, and they're multifaceted. There are instructional rounds that Ms. Crocker has been leading. There are collaborative forums in schools that principals and coaches have been leading. There's a lot of hard work been going on. There have been lots of attention to our attendance rates, and then you see improvement. We deliberately last year focused a lot of attention on our Hispanic students, and all of a sudden, we see growth in the Hispanic, right? So, but it requires, could require a lot more. Follow-up, yes?
Perhaps a follow-up report, you know, after you have time, because I think this is just, this is new information, right? And you're going to be planning anyway and strategizing, what's the next move, to share that with this committee as a follow-up. This is what we're going to do, this, you know, how we're going to focus on those areas where we didn't see the growth, those eleven schools, whatever, however you want to approach it.
Ms. Martin?
Sure. What I'd like to direct your attention to is that each school this past spring participated in a revised school improvement planning process. So they each have a three-year quality improvement plan, and they've been placed on the school's websites now. They're all up there except Pawtucketville. Pawtucketville has a new leader, and they're going through that process now. But these quality improvement plans outline five major goal areas aligned to the pillars of Lowell's strategic plan, and these are living, breathing plans. So each school is looking at their data, and they are adjusting those plans all throughout the year. They have quarterly checks of progress, so we'll model that in Leadership Academy for the leaders, how to do that with the instructional leadership team at each school and their school site council on their goals. Every goal has a key performance indicator, baseline data, and where they expect to grow. We're using things like iReady, attendance data, our HALLS dashboard data, to measure things like student belonging, sense of belonging, all of those other sort of softer, harder-to-quantify things that make kids want to come to school every day. So I'll strongly orient folks who want to know what each school is doing to go to the website and look at their QIPs. They are very, very detailed plans that had a wide range of input from the staff to the instructional leadership team and the school site councils. And for the first time, we did them over a three-year span, because we know we can make a lot of improvement in one year, but we need to sustain improvement year to year and continue to grow. And those are also really great places to find specific information. And just for the general public, if you, and for parents and folks who want to know what are the things that each school is working on and focusing on, visit your school's website under the homepage, and there's a school improvement plan link, and you can read about your school's QIP.
If I make one brief follow-up, because I think it's relevant as well. When Ms. Doherty asked us to follow up, so in a curious sense, we have already followed up. So the results and the data is not embargoed, so we're able to share it publicly, and that, right? But we've had access to this data since the summer. And so, for example, when we presented to the school committee at the previous meeting, we shared with you our strategic goal and our goals for, you know, I forget, was it sixteen or eighteen goals for the year? Those are our responses. So if you feel like an additional response, it's exciting for us, I think, to talk about what we consider to be the real work of getting into schools and supporting schools and supporting teachers. So we're happy to follow up, but to some extent, to a large extent, many of the details and plans for what we're doing to help improve schools have already been presented. We'll be happy to follow back on that.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I would agree that this is the kind of topic area. I mean, this is the, this is why we're here, you know what I mean? All of us. I mean, anyone who's working in a district. This is the stuff that is really, again, guiding decision-making and helping us make better, well-informed decisions from a committee perspective. I would say, I mean, I think the follow-up idea, absolutely, it's what we should be tracking. I would say, you know, previously, we used to have standing meetings where we had a monthly curriculum meeting where every month, it was just expected. You would get curriculum updates, information on new things that were being done to address, whether it was the QIP or the skip, they had a lot of different names for them, but a lot of improvement. But so it was a standard thing where every month, you know, the subcommittee was getting this information. We had such a more nuanced understanding and kind of, you know, appreciation for the complexity. And then, when we got a report like this, we were able to kind of place it in a context that gave it much more import and meaning for us. And I think that, you know, again, from my own perspective, I always found them to be incredibly helpful as an opportunity for, you know, and the same for curriculum, or I would combine, actually, curriculum and school improvement in this sense. You know, it was an opportunity for the district to show off. It was an opportunity to show what's working and to really instruct the school committee and through us, the public, on the kind of innovations and the responsiveness that results in these kind of numbers. And I just think it's a more powerful thing when you've had that ramp up, when we've had that education, so that we can really appreciate what we're looking at. And I think, you know, for a lot of people, I appreciate that the information's on the website. I've never gone there to look, don't tell anyone, but, you know, I think having it presented in a more proactive, engaged way could really help, you know, it helps us be better at our jobs, and I think it gives the public an opportunity to have, again, a better, more nuanced understanding of what can be really complicated. I mean, obviously, you throw a bunch of, you know, numbers and comparisons, just the way they calculate out that forty-seven percent with ten different things all going in, I mean, that's a little heady stuff. But again, if you have the ramp up, it'd be a much easier process, and I think we'd all benefit from it.
Just, I'll just pretend.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Martin. That kind of suggestion is very, very welcome. We would love to talk about the work more and in the particular type of forum. Just for clarity, we understood that in order to have such subcommittee meetings, we need a vote of the committee, that the committee had introduced a rule where all members had to agree before you have them. So I don't, whether it's entertaining a motion that someone might make or whatever, we're absolutely looking forward to that type of forum. We need you to instruct us how you'd like it to occur.
So I'd be happy to, at our next meeting, again, the last time I made that motion, it did not pass. Now, this was a very different committee back then. Well, that's not fair. I'll do it, I'll do it for the right, I'll wait two weeks.
Do you want to refer to a subcommittee?
Yeah. Well, no, I think we'll just, I'll make a motion at the next meeting, and then I wouldn't, yeah, I don't want to go against the agenda.
Is there a wish to refer this report to a subcommittee and speak about it?
No, we don't need to do that. This has been discussed right now. This will be a new topic. Thank you, though, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate the staff and the students and the family on the success, and it's, you know, it certainly is a positive mood, move here, and it's great news. It really is. What Ms. Martin just said about the monthly curriculum meetings, and I know that there was a lot of work that was put into it, she put a tremendous amount of work, but I think it was a good idea, because it certainly would bring us up to date constantly, and if there was any issues or problems or whatever, once again, communication, that we could jump on it before it became a major problem. The attendance, again, I think, and I agree with Ms. Doherty, you know, attendance is an extremely important thing, but something that we have to be working on constantly, absolutely constantly. And I think that when we find a school that seems to be turning things around and doing a good job, that's where we have to get in there and say, what are you guys doing? I mean, it seems to be working, whatever it is, so that we can, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, as we all know. If something works, let's just, let's just copy it. And I went on the DESI website, and there were a few things in there when I took a look that I don't think I saw in the report, but it's something that we certainly should be addressing, and, or maybe you can give some clarification for me on this, because you people are the experts, not I. If you take a look going back to 2020 and 2021, it mentioned that there was substantial progress. It was fifty percent for, towards improvement targets. Fifty percent. I mean, that was, that's incredible. However, when you go to 2023, with the accountability report in Lowell, the progress turned around, and it was moderate progress at thirty-nine percent. So I'm wondering, what happened with 2020, 2021, when we're talking about a fifty percent progress, and then all of a sudden, I mean, it's not like it's dropped to, you know, forty-eight or forty-nine, but when you get down to thirty-nine, that's a big number. That's one thing. I'm just going to go through a couple of them here, and we can, we can deal with it. When you look at grade ten, the English Language Arts, meeting expectations, going back to twenty-one and twenty-two, it was thirty-nine and thirty-eight percent. And yet, in twenty-three and twenty-four, it dropped to thirty-three and thirty-three. And that's quite a drop there. Now, on that same English Language Arts, grade ten, if you take a look at not meeting expectations, in twenty-one and twenty-two, it was nineteen percent and sixteen percent. And then, when you go to twenty-three and twenty-four, that number jumped quite a bit, to a twenty-four percent on both years. And that's alarming, at least when I'm looking at it on the surface here. We go to grade eight. Again, the achievement level, the increase is fifty percent. Not meeting the expectations on twenty-one, twenty-two was thirty-four and twenty-nine percent, and then it went from thirty-six to thirty-nine at twenty-three and twenty-four. In the last one here, when we're talking about math, and when we look at twenty-three and twenty-four, we're talking about not meeting expectations in grade-ten math. In twenty-three, it was eighteen percent. In twenty-four, it was twenty-five percent.
Mr. Conway, is there a question with this, or are you just reading the report back to us?
No, I'm giving this information. I think it's important to put on, as I said, this, I had one more, and that's what I was, I just wanted to give you this information. We had positive, but what are we doing with those negatives? How are we handling that? I mean, those numbers are kind of alarming, actually.
Lieutenant?
Ms. Crocker?
And, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I know that, you know, people might not want to hear some of this, but we also have to take a look at what might not be working, and then figure out, what do we do to make that work and change those numbers so that they can look like the numbers that you just gave us, too?
Very similar to what Ms. Doherty said about ten minutes ago, but yeah. Superintendent, go ahead.
Ms. Crocker, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Conway. I want to make sure that you and the public are cautioned that the accountability scheme now, the way that these numbers are calculated, are different than, say, when in 2019, when you referenced that fifty percent. So if we were doing the same way now that we were in 2019, we'd be going by our fifty-one percent this year, not the forty-seven percent, which is forty percent of last year and sixty percent of this year. So that accountability mechanism, that whole scheme, has changed, and do you know that it actually changed midway through last year? While we were living it, the state made yet another change, and they have kept tweaking the formula since that twenty-one, twenty-two year. That twenty-one, twenty-two year was considered a baseline for all of the new post-pandemic accountability measures to be rolled out. So there are some differences inherently in the psychometry of how this stuff is calculated that makes it difficult. And there is a little cautionary tale on the website, that these are not well to be compared, because they are actually measured, some of the calculations and totals come together differently than they did back in those times. So the actual mechanism has been tooled and retooled to come to this formula that they have now. That is not to say that your comments about the progress in ELA are not worthy and valid. Those we recognize, and they're statewide, and they're national. We have a crisis in our country right now with literacy. We are not rebounding in our city, in our state, or in our country. And actually, the national trend is a bigger decrease than the point eight that Lowell and the state of Massachusetts experienced. It's a two percent overall decrease in the reading proficiency rates in the country. So there is a crisis on our hands. This is why we're doing a literacy review. This is why we have new curriculum at Lowell High School for ELA as well as math. I mentioned the new math curriculum for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. There is a new curriculum this year rolling out in ninth grade for ELA, and next year, rolling up to tenth grade. And that's all meant to address that ongoing decline since the pandemic. And that's all meant to address that ongoing decline since the pandemic that Lowell, the state, and the country has struggled to address.
Well, I'm glad you clarified that, too, as far as the change in mid-season, and again, the, that's why they kind of, to me, and I'm not an expert in the area, but they kind of popped out at me, saying, what's going on here? And I think, again, going back to this very briefly with Ms. Martin talking about the meetings, I think that would, that would give us that opportunities, that we would be kept up to, you know, kept up to breast on what was, what was happening from month to month, really.
If I may make just one, a couple of clarifying comments. First, as she said, the questions are really welcome, both from Ms. Dougherty and Mr. Conway and Ms. Martin's comments. And one thing that's interesting is that when something is working really well, and you ask the school that's being recognized, what do you attribute that to? It's similar when something's not working, you've got to look into that, what is not working there, and so we have that same approach in both cases. In general, our students are starting at a lower level than they are in Wellesley. And there are different ways of looking at the data. There are many spots in our data, many of them, that deserve attention because they're a concern, and we can do that as well. Many of the areas that are a concern are in what we call norm reference. In other words, the actual achievement scores for many students at Lowell is relatively low. If we compare ourselves to Wellesley today, for example, we'd be very sobered. The criterion-referenced data is where we find a lot of the good news. In other words, criterion reference means the state has set a target for us, and we're being rewarded by progress towards the targets. We're doing really well with that, and that's worthy of celebration, and that's worthy of recognition of all the work that's going on in classrooms throughout the district. We are progressing towards our targets. Most of the good news is there, and I think that's the best we can expect for. Somebody said, you know, you don't expect to go from the sixth percentile to the 22nd. It's not fair to expect any school to do that in one year, or several years, for that matter. But the fair reading, I believe, is in looking at student growth percentiles and schools' criterion reference data, which is what we're citing pretty much, and in there, we see a lot of growth. Thank you for your attention to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 9.2 motion response by Mr. Rossi, May 15, 2024, regarding mental health support. Mr. Rossi.
Thank you very much for this report. It looks like there's been a lot of changes over the past two years, but you've been able to kind of stabilize the amount of social workers throughout. There is an area of concern that I have, in terms of what a SEL district support specialist is, and where they're housed, and what their position is within the district, if you could answer.
Sure. So our mental health department consists of the director of mental health, our SEL specialist and an SEL coordinator. The SEL district support specialists supports, well, they do a couple of things. This year, they're actually running CPTs, oh, sorry, CPTs with the schools. So they've kind of, they've surveyed all the schools, gotten a sense of kind of what the main topics that they really wanted PD on, and to be able to drill into, into the schools, so that, he is facilitating CPTs at the school level, as is the SEL coordinator. The other piece of what he does is similar to our district support specialists in terms of supporting the building administration with parents. He has a couple of assigned schools, as well as our two other district support specialists, kind of handpick the schools based on maybe there being more SEL needs at those buildings, and provides kind of liaison support to either connecting with families, connecting with administration, to try to work together if there's either some kind of conflict or something that needs to be worked out. The other big piece is him kind of coaching around implementation of SEL at the classroom level over the course of this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
What I've found this past week are two families that have reached out that, for some reason, cannot come to an agreement, different families, different schools, with maybe the principal, or figuring out tutoring or so forth, and it feels like somebody, and there has to do with a lot of absences also, so I really want to see that there is a SEL district support specialist focusing on maybe what's going on in that family resource center, where there's a lot of absenteeism, because I think there are, not a lot, but I mean, I think there is certain students that are happening to fall through the cracks, and it just concerns me when I hear students haven't been in school for a period of time. And just, so we have follow-up in terms of that, because their mental health, to boot, all impacted by COVID, I'm sure, everybody, but especially these kids and the parents maybe have a resistance, so maybe a social worker to focus on working with those students and their parents who may be resistant or not trusting after COVID.
Yeah, so we actually have a number of kind of different departments that work together for that. So for, we also have the addition of Darcy Coleman to FRC this year, which has been a huge addition as of kind of last count, she's over about 60 families that she's connected with just through FRC. Never mind her work in some of the community connections that she has, she's kind of connected with the library and some of the playgroups and such in town. So that is one resource directly through FRC. When we look at things like Lauren Campion's department, Lauren has also a social worker through there, typically dealing with older students who might be a little disconnected. She works in tandem with the high school to try and get those students re-engaged. We also then have kind of our district support specialists, so we have three. One is an SEL person, I'm not exactly sure how that name change kind of came up, but they are kind of like the first, if a parent has a concern, they're the, kind of the first stop. I think one of the challenges, and one of the things that we've been trying to get out is kind of student supports back, so to speak, and so I don't know, sometimes the parents know necessarily where to go, and, but what we've seen is kind of, as the weeks have progressed, we've had more and more connections. They're all assigned schools, they work collaboratively with the principals, and to work on exactly some of the things that you're, you've kind of mentioned, so difficulty either kind of accessing a support or a service, either in the community or within the school department, perhaps something like tutoring, maybe having a conflict at something that's happening at the building level, and kind of working with the family to understand kind of our process, as well, and come to a middle ground in terms of an agreement, or feeling that families are being heard also, and that somebody understands their perspective while working to build the relationship back at the building level with maybe an administrator, a teacher, whoever that might be. So I, we have, I feel like, a lot of built-in supports at this point, so it's kind of getting the words out that we're back, so to speak, a little bit, which we've been doing a little bit of PR around with the, hopefully, the community, I sent out a newsletter, hopefully people read it, to the community, just so that they know that there were a resource and we're available, if things like that, that in fact are happening, that we would be.
If I may, one other way that we can, is by finding out about individual cases where it's not working, and then figuring out from those people what's not right in our system. In other words, please refer them to us, we can both help those individuals, but also learn about where we need to make improvements.
Okay, thank you.
9.3 response from motion by Mr. Conway, January 3, 2024, regarding pest control. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, this is Dr. Hall. You know, I want to thank you very much for the, for the report, and by the way, I would like a printed copy on that. You know, this second paragraph down here, you know, right on target, when we made it clear that must be better communication, better documentation, quicker response times for unexpected or new situations that arise. I mean, this is good saying right on top of the situation, extremely important. And I will tell you that staff, parents, if a kid's, you know, they're, obviously, they're concerned, they don't want to have the little critters running around, and I've been at meetings, and somebody would say something to me about that, and I'd say, yeah, yeah, oh, I know, we don't really have it, and all of a sudden, a little mouse would run across at night, and, you know, for a little walk or something, and I think that by staying on top of things, I think it's extremely important. This is going to be an ongoing situation, needless to say. It's, you're never going to get rid of it, but certainly, if we can stay on top of it, I think we can certainly minimize. So again, I thank you very much for the report.
Thank you, and I want to commend my colleague, I think this was a good motion, because clearly, just in the report, they said, we've got to do a better job of getting communication, we've got to, you know, make sure that expectations are being met. I happen to be, I'll admit it straight up, I'm rodent phobic. I'm one of those people, if a mouse ran by, I would be screaming and on the table. And I know we've had this ongoing issue with our schools, but I want to just bring up this question, because when Mr. Conway's motion first came before the committee, we had people register to speak about the impacts of certain poisons that are being used. And I wanted to know if anybody here can speak to whether we are not using these poisons, and we actually got, I don't know if you all got it, but I got a letter, a follow-up letter from the group that came to protest, there are ways to deal with the mice and rat issue without poisoning our environment by the poison they ingest. And I just wanted to know if anybody, if we have an update on whether we are trying to stay away from those poisons and use other treatments, and there's a whole breakdown here?
So we, we contract out for pest control services, and I don't know that we can dictate to those companies exactly how to do the work. We can, if the committee wishes, we can restrict certain companies and certain, you know, products.
I mean, I think we're spending like $100,000 with one company, right? So to say, you know, we're going to contract your services, what are you doing, you know, what poisons are you using, whatever, and at least be informed, and I don't know, do if we have that information already, or we don't.
Dr. Hall?
I'm not aware of us, that company, using anything that isn't appropriate. The committee could say it didn't want certain pesticides in its schools, but at this time, we believe what the company is using is the best use of resources. They do have a three-year contract, I believe it's about $30, something thousand dollars a year, but this was put out to bid, and they were the winning bidder based on parameters that we set at the time.
Didn't hear the end of what you said.
There was a bid, Ms. Dougherty, which had parameters, and they were the responsive bidder. The next time around, the committee probably could set different parameters if it wished.
So it's a three-year contract that just started, so we've got another three years?
Yes.
So I'll just give you this information, Dr. Hall, if that's okay, and you could just let us know if they are using this, these products, or, so we at least know where we are, and then when we go out to bid again, we could maybe be more informed, I mean, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, I would like to try to use, you know, as environmentally friendly products as possible, but, so if, can I just give this to you? Thank you.
Yeah, motion to accept the reports, so the superintendent, 9.1 to 9.3 is a report to progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 10, new business, 10.1, approval to accept and expend allocated FY25 awards. In motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Ms. Conway. Uh, Mr. Conway, seven yeas.
10.2 already been completed, 10.3 sped stabilization reserve request, the motion to approve said request by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
10.4 budget modification request, the motion to approve budget modification request of $25,805,000 by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Bahu, roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
10.5 status update on ESR funds, the motion to accept update on ESR funds by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Rossi. Ms. Dougherty.
I, I have some questions, but I want to hear if there's a report you want to do first, because I noticed you had your hand up.
I was concerned that it may not be a question, I'm happy to entertain your questions. I want to point out to the committee that the deadline for committing ESR funds was this past Monday, September 30, and I'm happy to tell you that every, all of our ESR funds have been committed ahead of that deadline. We have an additional period of time to actually spend out the money, all of it has been, and that's due to a lot of diligent work in our, in our business office, and so the report in front of you has been prepared by Dr. Pinto, he's available to take your questions if you have them.
Thank you, and thank you for this report. It certainly covered my major concerns about, you know, that we do spend the money. I guess what I'm left with, and I'm referring to the last page where we have the kind of a breakdown, is, first of all, what are other expenses? That's a pretty high number. Can we get a little more, what does that include, other, I think it's, yeah, 2.6.
Dr. Pinto?
Ms. Dougherty, I'll be happy to do some further research on that. What I provided here is just a summary.
Okay.
So I'll be happy to collect that information.
Yeah, I'm just to break down, it's several million dollars, what does it cover? And then, really, the burning question, which I think we've all known, we talked about it as the fiscal cliff, all right, is every time we added positions, we knew that when the money dried up, how are we going to be able to afford that? So am I misreading this, but it looks like there's, in that little box at the last page, you have administrative salaries, instructional, direct services salaries, support staff salaries, stipends for after and out-of-school time, contracted services, so all those, that stuff that's being funded by ESR money is now going to be coming on to the general budget, correct?
So, I think, I think the correct way to describe it is that there is and was a fiscal cliff. We encountered it when we did the budget in May and June, and a number of positions were reduced. So we reduced eight positions at central office, as an example, right, and some schools reduced positions as well. So to some extent, we were done with the fiscal cliff to a point. Through a suggestion from Ms. Martin and various other work that has, our business office has taken on, a number of the local expenses were able to be assessed against ESR, so that the remaining ESR funds that we're just spending out now saved us from a more radical fiscal cliff. It remains to be seen to what extent an additional part of that fiscal cliff will occur next spring, right? That depends a lot on if we may receive additional funding from the state, the Student Opportunity Act and so forth, is promising additional funding, that remains to be seen, we'll be talking about that next spring.
So, if I could just follow up with that, so when we're looking at this breakdown that Mr. Pinto has provided us, these salaries are covered, because we have to spend it by the end of December, so these salaries are covered for the entire school year, right? We planned for that.
Dr. Pinto?
So I would assume so, in that, so there's often a vacancy savings that occurs over the course of the year with positions that have been unfilled, or delays in hiring, et cetera, and so that allows us a little bit of flexibility in the budget. I suspect that to be the case in this, but I'll certainly confirm that and furnish that information to you as well.
Okay. But then we may be looking at additional cuts in staff when we try to do, when we do next year's budget.
So it's much too soon to speculate, but that is a potential, in other words, the remaining ESR funds have softened the fiscal cliff this year. If the Student Opportunity Act gives us, you know, $40 million additional next year, that'd be a great boost, any further fiscal cliff would be abated, right? If the Student Opportunity Act additional funds that we're expecting is much, much less than that, well, it's a difference, so we, but it's too soon to speculate.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. Good night.
He runs through those meetings, baby.